No, I didn't. Probably. Right, so good evening councillors, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Audit and Governance Committee. I'm councillor Barry Pierpoint, I'm the Chair of this committee, and my Vice-Chairman to my right is councillor James Cantwell. Before we move into the Premier Items of the evening's agenda, I need to run through a few housekeeping details. And I'd like to remind everyone in attendance this evening that this meeting has been recorded and live-streamed on YouTube. Please ensure that when you're addressing the meeting, that you do so through the microphone system at all times. Please also ensure that you speak into the microphone as closely and clearly as possible. Mobile phones should be switched off or set on the silent mode. I don't think we've got any public attending this evening, have we? So we can move straight on. Finally, please be advised that abuse or intimidation and the kind will not be tolerated. Any disturbance resulting in the meeting being adjourned. Anyone who is deemed to breach these requirements will be warned and asked to refrain. If this behaviour persists, they will be required to leave the meeting. Now we move to part one of the agenda, the preliminaries. Apologies for absence.
Thank you, Chair. We've received apologies for this meeting from councillors Ralph Brigh, Leena Savickian, and our co-opted members Adam Cartwright and Gideon Hall. Thank you.
We're still short of microphones, so we'll have to bear in mind we may have to be moving them around the room until the new ones come tomorrow, so I understand. Right, other declarations of interest. Any member wish to declare an interest in respect to the items on the agenda? No? Minutes. Can I have the meeting's agreement to sign the minutes dated the 7th of July? Thank you. Just bear with me for a second. Are there any outstanding actions from the last meeting?
The action sheet from the meeting on the 7th of July 2025 was circulated with the agenda, and there are no outstanding actions, Chair.
Thank you, Ray. Are there any questions from members of the... Well, I've got any members of the public anywhere. There's no questions from members of the public, is there?
There are none for this meeting, Chair.
That concludes the preliminaries. We'll now move to part two of the agenda, the agenda items. External Auditor's Progress Report. This is a verbal report. And it's from KPMG Engagement Manager Rosie Kelly, who's joining us virtually this evening. Rosie, would you like to present your report?
Yeah, thank you. So I'm here today to give a verbal update on the external audit for the year ended 31st of March 2025. Overall, the audit has progressed really well and is approximately 85% complete. So that's a really significant improvement on where we were this time last year. We are on track to present our completion documents to the November Audit Committee. We have faced difficulties during our work over a significant risk of the valuation of land and buildings, in particular the timeliness and quality of responses from the internal valuer. However, we have been working closely with the finance team to resolve these issues, and it should not prevent us from finalising the audit. One area that does remain outstanding and that I would like to bring to the committee's attention is our audit of the related parties disclosure note. As part of this testing, we have identified six councillors who have not returned their declaration of interest to the finance team as part of the annual return. And without these, we are unable to confirm the completeness of the related parties disclosure note. Other than that, at this stage, there is nothing significant to bring to the committee's attention, and our final reporting documents will be presented to the November Audit Committee.
Okay, thank you very much, Rosie. I'll open the meeting now for any comments or any questions. Or does anybody want to raise any questions? I know that from the point of view of those six councillors, I know Democratic Services have now been following that up, chasing the relevant councillors to complete that. And hopefully by this week sometime, I think, with a bit of luck, or being well, or as soon as possible, we'll have all those completed for you anyway. I'm sorry that you've been inconvenienced, and it is now being handled with great urgency. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for the help.
Thank you. Councillor Orien.
Yeah, thank you. Firstly, it's not Democratic Services' job to chase up elected members' declaration of interest forms. That's for group leaders to do. The Democratic Services team have enough work on their plates to do without chasing lazy or incompetent councillors. So I suggest group leaders get on the case quick, smart. Would you mind repeating the... Sorry, did someone tell a joke?
I think you've been very, again, you're being very scathing, and I think whoever does the job, it's up to the individuals to sort out, not for you to tell us who should and shouldn't do the job. And I think we disagreed with what you're saying, all of us in this room. So carry on.
Oh, have you taken a vote there? Everybody just...
No, we're not taking a vote, but I think most people in this... No, I'm not being rude to you at all. I'm just... No.
As I say, it's not the Democratic Services team role and job to chase lazy councillors. It's the group leaders to chase them.
Yeah, you speak.
Apologies, just for reference information, I have actually gone through group leaders to chase members today. So if you haven't received an email, because no members in your group have any forms outstanding, we're just doing this as a favour to help Rosie and the team out. But corporate finance, we're chasing earlier this year. So we're just, we're doing this as an added extra, but we have gone through group leaders.
Thank you, Amanda, for substantiating what I have just said. Thank you very much. Perhaps you'd like to withdraw your scathing comments. Rosie, your first significant risk was relating to the land values. Could you just repeat the cause of that, please?
So just what I was saying just now for the progress update, I was just talking about the difficulties that we faced, in particular the timeliness and quality of responses from the internal valuer. Are you referring to the audit plan in terms of our actual risk?
No, I was specifically referring just to what you said, because I couldn't quite make out what you said. So what mitigations have you put in place then?
So we've been working very closely with the finance team, in particular P S P S, and I think P S P S have been having weekly conversations with the internal valuer. So I think we are at a position now where it won't cause us any issues in closing off the audit. However, I just wanted to bring it to the committee's attention as an area of kind of difficulty for us.
Okay, thank you. The internal valuer, is that an officer of the council, or is that someone that we contract in to do some work for us?
So I believe he is employed by East Lincolnshire District Council, who has taken over the role to also do the valuation of the other councils in the South East Lincolnshire partnership.
Okay, thank you. My second question, sorry, no, I'll leave it there for now. Thank you, Rosie.
Any other one you want to raise, any other issues with the councillor Woodleth?
Thanks, Chairman. I have been asked a question by one of my members about the corporation farm, and whether or not there's been an updated valuation on that. Can you advise me as to whether or not have been any further valuation of that particular asset at the council? Because I think it's quite a significant asset.
Yeah, so for the valuation of investment properties, which Corporation Farm is held as an investment property by the council, there will have been an updated valuation certificate provided by the valuer for that particular asset this year. We audited in detail last year, and this year, within our risk assessment, there wasn't any significant changes to the underlying data assumptions or other elements. So I don't think we've looked at it in specific detail this year, but there will have been a new valuation certificate, yes.
Anybody else want to ask any questions of the auditors? No? Okay, we'll move on. The committee's asked for notes and comments on the update. Comments will be recorded by the officers. Thank you. We're going to the Internal Audit Progress Report. This is item two on the agenda, page seventeen to thirty. And I'm going to ask the Head of Internal Audit and Risk, Claire Goodenough, if she can do her report, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. So good evening all. This report shares with the committee the progress for audit delivery and outcome since the start of the financial year. You will see that delivery is on track with plan expectations, with around 60% of the plan having been completed at the time of the drafting. We have shared our feedback received to date, which contains feedback from three finalised audits. It includes feedback ratings poor, which came from the cyber audit, where it was reported that the report took longer to issue than PSP staff had been informed it would. The cyber audit was undertaken by a co-sourced partner, and I've had a discussion with their manager and shared this feedback. Whilst they were very disappointed to receive poor feedback, they have amended their practices as a result. The audit team continues to be fully resourced and able to deliver the audit programme as agreed last year for the delivery in this year. There's, sorry, the report includes the outcome of our assignments. I would draw your attention to the insufficient control report that we've had to issue. This arose as there were no controls in place for the audit team to test, despite there being a scope and approach that had been agreed. It is unusual to issue an insufficient control report, and to help provide the committee with some assurance around improvements, we have agreed to undertake an assurance audit towards the end of this year. That will provide the committee with assurance around the actions taken as a result of the insufficient controls report. The team continue to follow up on management actions to assess how the binding risks have been addressed, and I'm pleased to report that management actions have been closed. The team are conducting the outstanding ones at the moment during quarter three, and these will be updated to you in the next progress report. I'm very happy to take any questions anybody may have.
Yeah, I've got a question for you. I've got two, actually. Sorry to hear about insufficient controls, and we haven't got a 151 officer here this evening. You can give us any answers. I don't know whether you can help us out on that one, Sean. No?
So...
Sean, can you help us out on that one, why there was insufficient controls? Have you got any idea at all, or can you speak on that behalf?
I haven't got any information in respect of that. I haven't been briefed on it at all.
Can you help? Claire, have you got any thoughts on that?
So it is very, very unusual. In my time as Head of Audit, this is the first one I've ever issued over sort of twenty-odd years. From what I understand, there are processes being put in place at the moment. Brendan has put a system in place that has been communicated across the organisation, but further details there, I don't know, because we've arranged to do this additional audit, which then we'll be in a position to give you an evidence base for you on where we are, why it's occurred. Unfortunately, I'm not able to tell you that.
I've, thank you. I've always said in the past, if somebody can't make the meeting, we need to have somebody in this room who can answer some of the questions. And clearly, the 151 officer is not here, and nobody else seems to be able to answer any questions. I find that quite poor. I'd like you to make a note of that, that in future, when we have any A and G meetings, where we have questions, somebody should be in the room from the council or the officers to answer the necessary questions. I've also got one from one of our lay members who are not here this evening. They talk about page twenty-seven on the management actions, which has to do with the, again, savings. They've asked the question, "The comments that information was not forthcoming from officers in the council is concerning, and has detrimental effect on the audit work. Does the management team have a plan to address this for further years?" I don't suppose anybody in this room or anybody on this meeting can give that answer at the moment, can they? No. Again, we've not got nobody here to answer the questions that's relevant to this meeting. John, I'll let you speak.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. In relation to that second point, all of these reports we receive through the senior leadership team, and when there's ever any feedback, such as that where there's been issues in a report, that will be progressed back through the organisation and steps taken within those particular departments. So we do have that mechanism where the internal audit team reports to us through corporate governance, through our corporate governance team meetings, to be able to take that feedback back into the organisation. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate what you're saying there, but we've got a committee sitting here with the questions, and nobody can give us any answers, and I think that's not good enough. You know, somebody should be here from whatever department it is to give us the answers to the questions that we raise. Otherwise, we're sitting here again with nobody to give us the information. Can we put that down on two action points from page twenty-five and twenty-seven? We'd like to know from the 151 officer or those who are responsible, the outcomes of those two questions that we've just asked. Thank you. Are there any other committee members like to raise any points on the internal audit report? Yes, councillor... Forgot your name. Cantwell, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to confirm I heard it right. The figure one report on page five, which is page twenty-three of the agenda pack, that that issue, as you mentioned, with the specialist auditors, had been resolved. And I was just hoping you could provide a bit of commentary on what that misunderstanding was.
So is that relating to the poor feedback? The one on page twenty-three?
That's correct, yeah. The IT, ICT cyber security.
Yes. So we unfortunately had to let our IT auditor go. So we appointed our partner, who we co-source with, to deliver this on our behalf. We did the scoping and unpicking what was required from there, and the risk assessment and the co-source delivered this for us. We weren't aware there was a problem until the feedback form came in, which gave us two poor ratings, both relating to the timing of the final report. I have addressed this with our co-source, whilst they were disappointed to receive that negative assurance, because they thought the audit had gone well. They have amended their practices for future when they deliver with us. And, you know, I don't think there's anything further I can do. It wasn't our staff, it was co-source staff. We do take our feedback very, very seriously. So where we get anything that's less than what we'd expect, we will always include it in our progress reports to you, so that you can hold us to account for the adequate delivery that we should be delivering.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Anyway, I think we made a point about representation at this committee meeting in future on items that are raised. I think it's now up to the council to give us, make sure that people are here at the meetings to present those or answer the questions accordingly. Right, the committee's asked to note and comment on the report if it was done. Is everybody happy to... Sorry, apologies. Okay.
Thank you for your report, Claire. I was obviously very disturbed to read about the insufficient controls. And I was interested to hear you say that's the first time in twenty years you issued that judgment. Could you just enlighten me a little bit more as to how this might have come about? I appreciate you might not have all the information at your fingertips, but is this something that can happen overnight? Because I'm struck that this has happened now, and I wonder where it's come from. I'm worried, actually, that it might have been a fashion that we haven't picked up either as a committee or as a cabinet or as a council. Are you able to comment on that at all?
So the audit it relates to was included in the audit plan. So they knew it was coming. It was about the identifying identification and monitoring of savings. The audit was scoped as it normally would be, terms of reference was agreed, and the approach was agreed. It wasn't until the work started that the auditor identified that there were no controls in place. Now, internal audit is based upon assessing the adequacy of the control environment to give you assurances to how that's operating. Unfortunately, on this occasion, we couldn't make that determination because there were no controls to be able to test. So as soon as we found this out, I made the determination that this would be the type of report we would write, which is slightly different to the usual assurance reports we would do. And contact was made with your interim 151 to let him know what was happening. He was comfortable for us to proceed on that basis. And so that's what resulted in this report being issued to the 151.
Okay, thank you. I do have another question for you, which is to ask how this item may impact our overall assurance coverage for twenty-five, twenty-six. Will it impact at all?
So there is a possibility it may impact negatively upon your audit opinion that I will give you at the end of this year. At the moment, I am sort of reserving judgement on that until I've seen the work that we are able to evidence and assess for the control environment when we come back to re-audit at this point. That audit will be in assurance rating, even if there are minimal controls in place. That will result in giving the committee some assurance, if we can give assurance. At that point, that's when I will determine the impact upon your audit opinion, which I will provide at the end of this financial year.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple more, please. How is audit coverage adapting to emerging risks such as cyber resilience?
So we, at the start of the financial year, we carry out a risk assessment. A previous member of the team carried out a risk assessment that was based on the risk profile for the council from an internal audit perspective. It's based on the combined assurance work that's delivered, and it's based on the horizon scanning that we do across the high-profile areas from an internal audit perspective that tend to need that wider focus. As the year progresses, if there are areas that we need to amend, so for example, as a result of the risk profile for this insufficient control report, we are amending the plan this year, partway through, to be able to meet this very clear risk that you've got across the council. We are looking to make some changes for the way that we carry out that process for you for next year, because I think we can give you better value for money, we can give you a deeper approach to some of the areas that are starting to be a bit more prevalent across the public sector. But for now, we do have the ability to make that flex in the audit programme, usually through discussion with the section 151.
Okay, thank you. If we could look at something in a bit more positive light, if that's possible. Is there any evidence of sustained improvement in areas that have been audited in previous years?
I think it's fair to say that the sort of starting to get better access to the data has definitely improved, which is a real positive. We're starting to get an understanding of first line. So as you may know, internal audit is split across three lines. So we are your third line of assurance. Previously, there's been a lot of focus on second line assurance, whereas from this year, we've started to go deeper, so we're starting to look at first line assurance. So whilst we start to look deeper and give you that deeper level of assurance around the work we do, that is in contrast able to give you a greater level of assurance, the deeper we go into that, the application of internal controls.
Okay. Well, thank you for your report, Claire. Thank you for being here tonight. Lastly, Chairman, I'd just like to say that you get to oversee the agenda and the issuing of the agenda. And I would suggest if you need officers here, it's at that point that you instruct officers to either be here or send a deputy. You know, you receive a substantial allowance, the Chair receives a substantial allowance for that work, and I don't find it appropriate to turn up and belittle officers because they haven't turned up, whoever they may be.
Well, I'm just going to clarify then and rectify your incorrect comment. I've asked before for officers to be here, and I've asked them in previous meetings before you was even on this committee. And I've always made it very clear that I want people here. I don't go about belittling people at all. I don't go about belittling people at all. And I made it very clear how I operate as a chairman. And I do everything as I should do. So I thank you for your comment, but it's irrelevant. It's irrelevant. It's irrelevant, your comment. I'm going to move on. Claire, can I ask you, could you give me the dates of the two audits that you did on the cybersecurity and on the insufficient controls? What were the dates of the audits, please?
Let me go away and check. I don't want to give you the wrong information. So let me quickly have a look at the report. And then I will let you know the actual dates if that's helpful. Unfortunately, I don't have that to hand because we don't, we don't usually include that sort of thing in the, in the committee papers. But I can certainly find out.
I'll do it today, not a problem. But I'd like to know the dates that these audits were carried out, those two particular audits that we've got these, these comments on, okay?
I can definitely let you go, let you know before the end of this committee meeting.
Okay, if you don't mind, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem.
Right. So thank you very much for your report. So the committee has asked to note and comment on the report. Is everyone happy to take this noted? Comments will be recorded by the officers. Thank you. We'll move on. This is the Internal Audit Charter. And again, I'm going to ask Claire to be presenting this report to the committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Me again. So this is the Audit Charter, which is the official document which sits behind the internal audit function and shares the conditions and requirements for delivering internal audit across the council. This is used by the internal audit team as well as senior managers and members to understand the access requirements, the authority and the reporting visibility for the audit function and how we operate within it. It is good practice to review the charter when there is a fundamental change, such as a change to audit leadership, a change to the reporting structure, the constitution of the audit committee, or as in this case, a change to the internal audit professional standards. The charter follows the expected format issued from the Institute of Internal Auditors. And there is nothing untoward in here that you wouldn't find across any normal county council or public sector organisation. Very happy to take any questions if there are any about the charter.
Thank you. Anyone wish to ask any question on the charter? No? Thank you very much on that one, Claire. We'll move on. Thank you. I do need a proposer and a second on this item agenda. So can I have a proposer for the charters? Councillor Isard and a second, councillor Woodliffe, all in favour? Agreed? Thank you.
Thank you, committee.
Thank you very much. Let's go on to item four. This is the risk report, quarter one. And it starts on page thirty nine of the agenda pack. And I'm going to have to group manager insights and transformation Suzanne Rov to give her report. Thank you, Suzanne. Over to you.
Thank you. I do apologise. I am struggling with my voice tonight. So if you can't hear me, please indicate, but I'll do my best to at least make it through the meeting. I'll pick up the actions from the last meeting to start with, please. And so we had the risk training on the fifteenth of September. And we have an additional virtual session, which is planned for the twenty seventh of October, which is two weeks from tonight. We can pick up a full list of the comments and suggestions after the second session. But just an idea of the sorts of things that we talked about at the initial training. There's the potential to invite lead officers and assistant directors for specific items in future as needed. A focus on the town board risks and identifying lessons learned from within services. So where there may be operational risks which are managed at the operational level, that doesn't usually get escalated into your report. But we're going to ask the services to note that learning. And then we can bring that back to you for assurance alongside your quarterly reporting. We'll collate a full list of actions after the twenty seventh and then bring that back to your next meeting with the quarter two report. Services are also looking at the potential impact of AI, which was requested at the last meeting. And that will also come forward in the quarter two report. In the meantime, this is the usual quarterly risk reporting for quarter one, which is as at the end of June. On page forty, you can see that there have been some improvements to the covering report from internal audit recommendations and the initial feedback from committee members. More will follow in quarter two, where we'll try to add more detail to that covering report so that you don't have to refer back to the appendices. That's a work in progress. And I'll just draw your attention to a couple of items, the changes that have happened from page forty. The wording of the civil contingency risk has been reviewed and updated as we have a new partnership resilience manager in place now. And in particular, under this heading, we're also looking at the battery storage risk, which was raised by councillor Cantwell. This will be picked up locally in our own risk register. And also raised with the Lincolnshire resilience forums, so that they can be picked up regionally. And that's in hand with Christian Allen. On page forty one, the wording of the environment act risk has been updated. That's linked to the extension of the depot lease to accommodate more vehicles. And the wider waste improvement programme board, which is reviewing the risks on a quarterly basis now. The business continuity risk is going to be combined with the civil contingency risk as there are similarities, so we'll reduce to one risk. The health and safety risk has increased in school. It's still a medium, but the likelihood has increased to reflect there are longer overdue outstanding order actions relating to health and safety. This is being addressed by the directors of the health and safety clinics, which have now been established. But it is right that the risk increases at this stage until that moves back to a better position. At the top of page forty two, there's a new risk around the IT server room. There is a project underway now to address the risks to the infrastructure from fire and data loss. And that will remain on the risk register until the project is successfully delivered to mitigate that risk. At the bottom of that page and on page forty three, we have the partnership risk table. And there's one change there related to local government reorganisation and the workforce development strategy. So the specific impact of LGR is not yet known. But we do have some specific risks around staffing. So that has been picked up in the strategy around skills and confidence. It's a little bit of a whistle stopper tour of some of the changes that have happened since the last quarter. And we look and look in more detail at the training session later in the week. But if you have any specific questions or queries, I'm very happy to take those.
Thank you, Suzanne. I've got some questions. I'll, we'll take questions in a second. I've got some questions anyway from a couple of the lay members of this committee. If we go to page forty, the BBC twelve and BBC op twenty five. The question raised there is, are there financial penalties for not improving on these risks, i.e. missing government targets and missing bin collections? So do we have these figures for these?
I don't believe there are financial penalties, at least not at this stage. I will ask the question. But there's never been, that, that's not been picked up in any of the risk reporting. So I don't think there are penalties. There may be changes that come with the environment bill, so I will double check, but not at the moment.
Okay, that's that question. And if you look at page forty five, the SELCP O two, what is the background to the trust issue and why is it being tolerated instead of treated? Another question from one of our lay members.
Yeah. So the trust issue was around some of the changes that were happening and with LGR coming on board. But the current position, as agreed by the senior leadership team, is that there are no changes to make at the moment to that risk and that's a risk that is tolerated.
Okay, thank you. And on page fifty one, the BBC op fifty three, one of the lay members have asked a question, what is GIS?
It's geographical information system. It's mapping.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for any of the members of the committee? Also, Woodliffe.
Chair, I'm not sure about this really, but page forty two, talking inadequate mitigation of infrastructuralists in the BBC server. I thought we'd actually, I thought the servers had been transferred elsewhere. Is that, am I right in that or not? The servers themselves have been moved from here elsewhere.
So this is as at the end of June, so I expect that things have moved on.
Okay, thanks very much. I just had my mind that the servers have been moved from here, but maybe I've been a bit surprised.
Any other questions from yourself, councillor Woodliffe?
Yes, I suppose really it's the local government forum for Greater Lincolnshire. Obviously, it's high risk. Whatever it is, it's going to be the end of us, isn't it? Unfortunately. It's a bit like an execution, isn't it really? Very strongly against it, but I mean, who cares, I think.
Okay, if you're going to speak, just get a bit more closer to the microphone. No. Any other questions for any of the members? No. Sorry for the councillor, councillor Cantwell. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to drill down a bit further onto BBC O six, the civil contingency risk. I just wondered, does the Borough Council record the coverage of parish emergency plans in the eighteen parishes?
I don't know. I will find out. And I'll talk to the new partnership resilience manager and get some more detail on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councillor Dorian.
Thank you for your presentation, Suzanne. Nice to see you as ever. I've got a couple of questions for you. So I'd like to know how mitigations for high residual risks are being tested for effectiveness. Do you do any of that?
And that is one of the items that came up in our recent audit. So yes, we're meeting with the auditors tomorrow to go through how we do that and to put in a bit more detail. At the moment, the mitigations and the risks themselves are reviewed by the senior leadership team. And the responsibility sits with the assistant directors. But it is right now that we have the process across the partnership that we can move on to more detail into looking into those risks. So yeah, this year, we intend to do more of that second checking of those mitigations.
Okay, lovely. Is that something we could perhaps have a note on in the future? Yeah, thank you. And then as to risk appetite, how is that defined and communicated across the organisation?
And so it was a while ago that we set the risk appetite for, for Boston. And it's something that we are working with Lincolnshire County Council at the moment to bring in their experts to redo the risk appetite. So we meet with members and senior officers to review different scenarios, to work out what our risk appetite is as a council, as individuals, as groups within the council. And that's something that will happen in the next quarter.
Okay. And if there are any sort of major changes to that, would, is that something else you could give us a note on, please, for the committee?
Yes, we'll include the outcome of that in the relevant quarterly report, yeah.
Lovely, thank you. And then lastly, has this risk register been independently reviewed for completeness and alignment?
Not independently. The auditors look at the risk management arrangements independently every year. And they have looked in more detail at the risk register. And that was the latest audit that came through. And some of those specific recommendations that they made about the layout and about reviewing the mitigations ourselves came from that. They don't do it all of the time because in a lot of the ways, the risks are, are ours to, as a council, to, to review. But yes, the, the auditors have had more of an in-depth look in their last audit.
Okay, well, and thank you very much for your work, Suzanne. I appreciate that. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Councillor Dally.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Suzanne. I'd just like some clarification. On page forty, we go to Boston strategic risks, local economy. And we have it at medium and direction of travel is just flat, which is an at target score. How, how do you define the local economy? Because the reality, it shows something different on the ground?
Yes, it is specifically the risk of the local economy impacting on the council and the council's ability to deliver its priorities and its services. So that's what we're looking at. But we can look at that in more detail at the training. We could perhaps go through the whole line and get into more of the detail about how it came about, how it's reviewed, while we're all together.
Okay, thank you. May I come back, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you. Page forty one, net zero targets. And we have here again medium and at target score. Is it according to the government targets or is it a local target set by Boston itself?
We have a strategy and a target that we have set as a council, but it will be based on national targets as well.
Okay, thank you. The, the last thing which is, I would like to ask you, Suzanne, is safeguarding, because we have it here as well, as I think medium and then a target score. The safeguarding, does it in general work for everybody or there is different categories of age or?
Yeah, there are specific safeguarding guidelines that we have to follow. And some of that is around adult safeguarding, some is around child safeguarding. And we have an annual training programme that all staff have to complete. So it's around making sure that our plans for safeguarding are in place, regularly monitored and updated. And that if there were any issues, they would come through in the risk register for you to be aware of. But there's nothing to report at the moment.
Okay. In safeguarding, if I may stay on the same subject, do you have any? I do believe that we have connections with the police and other authorities to let us know how the situation is involving around Boston. So it does, is that included in our risk assessment?
I wouldn't know the detail on that. I can talk to the lead officer and get some more information behind that risk.
Yeah, that would be interesting to know. Thank you, Susan. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Cantwell.
Thank you. Just to follow on from councillor Danny's comments about safeguarding. I just wondered how our safeguarding apparatus was structured. Does each team have a designated safeguarding lead? You know, is there a consistent approach across all teams or does it change structure? I mean, I appreciate you may not be, be able to give me the answer now. But if you come back to me at a later date with information, that'd be great.
Yeah, I can do that. We have, yes, we have a strategy for that and a process that's in place. So I can share that with the committee. So you've got the full detail.
Thank you. Any more questions from any other members? No? Right. So the recommendation is the committee notes the quarterly risk monitoring information for quarter one twenty five, twenty six. Do I have a proposer, please? Councillor Dally, second, councillor Scoot. All in favour? Thank you. We'll move on. We're on item five, quarter one treasure report twenty five, twenty six. I am going to, it's on page fifty three, I'm going to ask our treasure manager from PSPSL, Sean Hausen, to present his report. Thank you, Sean. Over to you.
Thank you, Chair. You have before you on page fifty three, the overarching report for the quarter one treasure report for two thousand and twenty five, twenty six. But I propose to go to the main report, which will start at page sixty. This report refers to quarter ending thirtieth of June, two thousand and twenty five. The SIP code of practice on treasury management recommends that members be updated on treasury management activities at least quarterly. This report therefore ensures the council is implementing best practice in accordance with that code. Section two, on page sixty, provides a little bit of information in relation to an economic update. But the key points from that are gross domestic product in the first quarter was marginally down. Earnings growth was down, inflation was down, and the Bank of England base rate was reduced in the quarter. There was two monetary policy committee meetings in the quarter on the eighth of May and the nineteenth of June. And the reduction in the base rate in May was reduced from four point five percent to four point point two five percent. And you'll probably be aware that since that time during quarter two, that rate has already been reduced to four percent. The chart on the top of page sixty one refers to the forecast for interest rates. This was the latest forecast at the time in quarter one that Link or MUFG, our external Treasury Managers, advisers had given us, and that was date originally formed on the tenth of February two thousand and twenty five. And their forecast for interest rates at the end of the financial year was that it would be three point seven five percent. Interestingly, the December forecast was that it would be at four percent and September twenty five was four point two five. So the cuts have come a little bit quicker than anticipated. And I'm sure there will be a revised forecast in the quarter two midterm report. Paragraph four refers to the annual investment strategy, which was approved by council on the third of March two thousand and twenty five as part of the budget setting report, which sets the council's priorities as initially the security of its capital, then the liquidity, and then finally, after taking into those considerations, the yield achieved. In relation to creditworthiness and investment counterparty criteria, there's been very little change in relation to the ratings of financial institutions for the council to be aware of, but we do monitor that on a very regular basis. Chart on page sixty two shows investment rates in the market for the first quarter. And you can see from that chart that over varying periods, the rates in the market have been on a gradual decline, which does have an implication on the investment returns. But we did anticipate that as part of the budget setting process. And during the financial year, the council has made investments in line with the agreed treasury management strategy. The table on page sixty three provides a snapshot of the investments that the council held at the thirtieth of June, totaling thirty, just under thirty two and a half million pound, which is marginally down from the level at the end of the financial year of thirty four point seven million pounds. Property fund investments, as you're aware, the council has property investments. The overall change in the combined net asset value for all these funds during the first quarter has been a decrease of ten thousand pounds, just over ten thousand pounds, so relatively flat based on capital valuations. The M and G UK Property Fund is liquidating its assets because the fund is being wound down, as you will be aware, and the council has received to date just over two hundred thousand pounds further distributions, leaving an amount of just under two hundred thousand pounds outstanding of its original investment. The landscape chart, landscape table on page sixty five provides all the numbers in relation to those property fund investments. The AEW fund, the very last one on that table, they have received redemption requests of ninety percent of the fund. Effectively, what's happened is on the thirtieth of September, the fund has ceased trading of its shares. They've suspended the training of the shares to assess. That's done in the interests of the remaining shareholders to ensure that fire sales don't happen of the assets at the expense of the remaining shareholders. But we await further information as to the likely direction of that fund. It may be that the fund will continue if they can encourage some of the shareholders who want redemptions to withdraw those redemptions, or it may possibly merge with another fund, or it may wind down the fund similar to the action that M and G took. But we will continue to keep members informed of that progress. Page sixty seven, the table on the bottom of page sixty seven refers to the PWB borrowing rates. And you can see there that the PWB borrowing rates during the first quarter has been on a gradually increasing trend, and that has continued into the second quarter as well. And that's due to current market volatility, uncertainty in the markets, budget concerns, and the US lockdown in relation to borrowing limits that they have there at the moment. And the council's actual borrowing, you'll see the table there halfway down that page, the State Street loan, that was at a fixed rate, eleven point one two five percent. So the actual for interest was in line with budget and the forecast at the time was that the outturn would be in line with the budget. There is a paragraph there that stated that we were in negotiations to repay that loan under preferential terms in comparison with the previous quotes that we'd had. And I can confirm that that loan has now been repaid and replaced with a PWB loan. And the numbers can be, will be presented in the midterm report as a transaction in the second quarter. Paragraph six replies, paragraph six refers to the compliance with the Treasury and Prudential indicators, such as example as your borrowing limits, your profile of borrowing and your capital expenditure and what that actual expenditure is in line with budget. But I don't propose to go through that in any detail. The recommendation is that members note the report. Yet members note the report, receive and review the contents of the report attached at appendix one, and happy to take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Sean, for that report. We'll take questions then from councillor Wardle.
Thank you, Chairman. Thanks, Sean. I come back to the State Street loan really because in all my time on the council, that has been the big bugbear really. You know, there was attempts in twenty twenty twelve, thirteen to get rid of this loan, but we didn't make any progress. So the question is, you know, what happened? Then for them to suddenly throw in the towel and give us what we wanted, really, how, when you say professional, preferential, what were the terms? I think that's the thing. I mean, it's, it was a big, you know, very, very, very annoying issue. I can remember the report done by Dr. Councillor Gregory to try and ascertain how we could get rid of this loan of eleven a quarter, eleven and eight percent, isn't it annually? But we never, we were told we couldn't, we couldn't get rid of it. So something must have changed in our favour for that to happen. Can you, can you be?
Yeah, the original loan was with State Street, but as with all Lobo loans, they can be sold on. And the loan had become part of the Rolls Royce Pension Fund. And we, the last quote that we'd received for redeeming that loan was in March two thousand and twenty five. And in addition to the repayment of the principal, they wanted a premium of eight hundred and seventeen thousand, based on the market conditions at the time, because obviously therefore go in the income of eleven point one two five percent, and would only be able to replace that in the market with what the rates were in the market at that time. Since that time, the, I believe the Rolls Royce Pension administrators have changed. And I believe this is probably the only Lobo loan that they had on their books. And they are, they were rewriting their governance processes. So they were keen to exit that loan to reduce the governance requirements. So they offered the council a once in a lifetime offer, as they called it, of a flat payment of one point five million pounds, which was three hundred odd thousand pounds lower than the previous quote that we were given. And that included the accrued interest at the time from the date of, from the thirty first of March, we'd already, that was the last time the interest had been paid. So we'd already got the one million pound principal to repay, the interest of, just bear with me a second. Yeah, the accrued interest was that just over thirty, yeah, thirty thousand seven hundred and eighty four pounds. So the premium worked out effectively at just under four hundred and seventy thousand pounds, which in comparison with the eight hundred and seventeen in March, was considerably lower. When you actually crunch all the numbers based on the interest payments over the life of the loan, taking into account the fact that you paid the additional five hundred thousand, the interest you would forego on investing that five hundred thousand, effectively over the lifetime of the loan, my calculations work out that there is an overall saving over that life of around six hundred and sixty thousand.
Thank you very much. I suppose, I suppose really the question is why, I suppose why it couldn't be done before. I mean, I always, we always wanted to know how it was that the council took out a loan, you know, for a million pounds at eleven and eight percent without any anniversaries built into it. And that really goes back, I suppose, to nineteen ninety one, when the person concerned took it out. But it, you know, if you think about it over the, what, the past thirty odd years or more, or the interest, three, four million pounds interest paid on a one million pound loan, I think. Is that right?
It is a lot of interest and the rate is high, but it was probably the market rate at the time. But there was a lot of Lobos issued around that time, and they certainly have gone out of favour now. And you don't see hardly any Lobos being issued. And we certainly don't look at any.
Right. So if this can be replaced, this would be paid for by a public works loan board loan, isn't that, is that correct? Yes?
Yes, we've taken out a one million pound PWB loan at a rate of, yeah, somewhere four point one percent for five years. And then what will happen is in five years, we will review that. The reason why we took a five-year loan rather than a loan for the remaining term is because we consider the PWB rates to be high in the market, the market rates in general to be high at the moment. Forecast for interest rates are that they will go down. And then what we will do is hopefully in five years' time, that loan will be retaken out. Or if local government reorganisation continues and happens, then obviously the new organisation will review whether they require to take out that new loan or whether it can be swallowed up as such in the overall investments of the new organisation.
Is there any possibility we could do the same thing as we did with the previous Public Works Loan Board and do a deal with the government and save ourselves even more money?
Yeah, for, to be able to get a discount on that loan, you can't repay a loan within twelve months of it being taken out. But the discount certainly wouldn't be anywhere near as high, because the loans that you redeemed previously were long-term loans. Therefore, you've got lots of years at effectively low interest, the difference between the low interest rate and the redemption rate where you get a payment for. Whereas on a short five to five-year loan, the discounts wouldn't get significantly higher in that scenario. But it is possible you could redeem if market conditions, if the rates in the market continue to go higher, then that is when you would be likely to get a discount. But if market rates fall, that's when you'd have to pay a premium to get out.
Thank you very much indeed for that, you know, very thorough report. It's excellent news. I mean, it's, by all accounts, sir, after fourteen years of being a councillor, really good news.
Thank you very much, Sean. Thank you very much, Council Wardle. councillor Austin.
Thank you, Chair. My question relates to the property funds. Should we be considering a change of strategy going forward on the property funds?
Sure.
Yes, we are regularly in discussions with section one five one officer and the senior leadership, senior leadership team in relation to the property funds. But what we have to do is consider what the market circumstances are at the time, the likely duration of getting out of those funds anyway, and what the forecast for property funds are going forward. If we take, for example, the AEW fund, which we got notification of that their redemption, they'd had a large investor that asked for, that submitted a redemption request, and they've got redemption requests for ninety percent of their portfolio. So straight away, what they've done is they don't want to do a fire sale of assets, in other words, sell all their assets at a cheap rate, because that's likely to affect the remaining shareholders. But also, what likely, what happens there is they've increased the discount that you have to accept if you want to sell early. So now, if we, if we wanted to sell, first of all, you've got to go in the queue, which there's already ninety percent of the investors there waiting to get out. But you'd also have now, you have to take a twenty percent discount. So clearly, our view on that one is we need to see what will happen with that portfolio. Because if it goes similar to the M and G fund where they wind the fund down, I'm not saying that's what will happen, but if it does, they're more likely to realise a higher, higher value for the shareholders, similar to what the M and G fund has done. The M and G fund will, is likely to return a slightly higher price overall than the book price was that the council paid for them at the time. And hopefully, if that's what happens with the AEW fund, we should receive significantly higher amount of funds back in comparison with if we were to exit and take a twenty percent discount. Some of the other funds as well have got quite large redemption requests as well. Schroders, I believe, is in the region of fifty percent. Blackrock have got redemption requests going back two years. So even if we wanted the funds out at the moment, they are illiquid investments. That was highlighted at the time when the original decision was made, that if the property cycle goes, if you end up trying to get out at the end of the bottom of the property cycle, it can be very, there can be a very long time before the funds come back. The market forecast at the moment is that the returns that you'll receive from your, effectively what they get in rents and lease payments, that's what you get in relation to your dividends received. But the capital valuations, they, they're saying that they market through from now, the annual returns are likely to be around three percent through to two thousand and twenty nine, thirty. So taking that into consideration, at the moment, the council isn't looking to exit at this stage based on the current market circumstances, but will be looking to get out on the property funds when market conditions improve. Because also what the council must consider is if you exit the property funds at a loss to what you paid, you have to finance that loss in the year that the loss crystallises. So if you sold them in two thousand and twenty five, twenty six, and say you took a million pound loss, you would have to finance that from your reserves effectively to pay for that. So it would make a hit on your reserves if you did that.
Thank you very much, Sean. That's very well explained. Any further questions, councillor Austin? Or anybody else wants to ask any of the questions? Right, councillor Dorian.
Thank you, Sean, very much. And I think you have a magic touch. Because it was thanks to you that this council saved six million pounds in redeeming our public works loan board loan earlier on, oh, it was last year now, wasn't it? And in actual fact, since at least two thousand and seven, I'm aware of, of councillors desperately trying to find information about the State Street loan in order to redeem it. So congratulations on doing that. That's a big, big achievement and well done. When you do the final note on the State Street loan, would you, would you add a note, just so that the public can fully understand the, the context of it, that when the year it was taken out is important, but also that the methodology of taking out such a loan could, could rely simply on one single officer, I believe, making that decision on their own, without bringing that decision through political leadership or indeed full council. You may have to do a little bit of research around that, Sean, and I don't want to give you too much extra work, but that is my understanding of how we incurred that loan at such a horrific interest rate. I think it would be interesting to know when you bring that note forward, the total amount that it's cost this council in the lifetime of the loan. And I think I would like a note on the property funds, just around the year they were taken out, so that we can just have a better understanding of what the issues were at that time. Because they proved to be not, well, I don't think they proved to be a brilliant investment. But to report this evening, Sean, thank you for that. I've got a couple of questions. Has the council remained fully compliant with its prudential indicators?
I believe they have, yes.
Okay, good. That's reassuring. And going back to a question I asked earlier, I asked Suzanne about risk appetite. Have there been any changes made to the risk appetite around treasury management or indeed borrowing?
No. Yeah, we produce the annual treasury strategy each year as part of the budget setting report, and it is a separate document that has to be approved by council. And as part of that strategy is reviewed by the section one five one officer and invites comments from members should they wish to challenge any of the recommended specified and non-specified investments and the counterparty limits, et cetera. In relation to the investments, there hasn't been any significant change recently. We do keep the counterparty criteria under regular review with the counterparty criteria that is the matrix that is produced by our external Treasury advisers, which takes into account the three credit rating agencies' ratings for the financial institutions. It takes into account the sovereign ratings, and it also takes into account the rating watches whereby they may be put on a negative watch, for example, by Fitch or Moody's Standard and Poor's. And they take that into account when assessing the recommended duration for investments of those financial institutions. But it also takes into account, since the Icelandic banking situation, an extra layer that the external Treasury advisers put in, was they took into account the cost of insuring against banks defaulting on their loans and what's known as credit default swap loan prices. So it takes that into account. And if they say, if they see that a particular financial institution's cost of borrowing, cost of insuring against their borrowing costs and not redeeming their loans, if they see that go up, if it goes above, a certain percentage above the if it goes above a certain percentage above the average, then what they do is they will drop the recommended duration or recommend no further investments made with those counterparts. We do keep that under regular review before we make any, any financial investments with financial institutions. A lot of the loans at the moment are with local authorities rather than financial institutions, because the yields that you get from those are considerably higher than the financial institutions. And that is down to the budget pressures that a lot of the councils are now seeing, including ourselves. So if we can get higher rate from lending to a local authority, that is a better risk as such because you're backed by the, effectively backed by the government on those. So you're likely, you're virtually ninety nine point nine 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 percent certain of getting your money back. Even if section one one four notice was issued, they still have to meet contractual payments, and a loan is a contractual payment. So they would still make the repayment to us, even if a section one one four notice was issued.
That's reassuring. Thank you, Sean. Well, I think you, I had another question, but I think you, you covered it in that final answer there, Sean. So again, thank you very much. I appreciate your report tonight.
councillor Danny.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just would like from Sean maybe a clarification or explanation. I mean, knowing the situation of our economy now, it's, I mean, we have inflation, there is a lot of issues coming through, and there is a budget, if I'm not mistaken, coming in November. Do we have this fear? Do we prepare? Do we have any strategies? Because we have assets, so we get some income from our assets, so taxation will, you know, affect on it. And also the insurances will go up. So that will reduce our probably income or our profit. So do we have any strategies for that, Sean?
Well, in relation to the investments, we keep the interest rate forecast under regular review. Mentioned in these meetings regularly that I try and maximise the investment returns as much as I can. But the overall market forecast is that interest rates will fall. I'm aware that interest rates from local authorities, when we get closer towards January, February, March, they will go quite high and probably very high. And I always try and make sure that we've got funds maturing in January, February, March, that we can lock in at a higher rate, even if base rates go down, to try and secure the next year's budget returns as such. In relation to your budget that is set future years, we take into account the forecasts for inflation. And then what we will be doing is like for your fuel costs and all that sort of thing, we will be building in inflationary costs as part of your budget. It has an implication if there's a lot of taxation rises. It has implications on things like your collection of your council taxes and your business rates. But they, they do regularly monitor that, but it's very difficult to quantify what that effect will be. As you know, council tax is one of the few, one of the few bills that you can actually send to jail for, so heaven forbid. But most households will treat that as a priority over the bills.
I don't know if it is probably Sean who can answer that. The building we're sitting in.
Did you put your microphone there?
Sorry, thank you. I just would like to know, the building we're sitting in, it's owned by the council? Do we have any loans or any mortgages on this building? And what's the value of our building?
Now, the only loan that the council has is the one million pound with P W L B.
So therefore we will say that this is a loan free building if it's owned by the council?
As far as I'm aware, it is, yes.
But it just, you know, sometimes it's a cure, you know, what's the value of this building, basically, if, if you can say that?
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, but certainly the, the property team would know if there's any charges against this building rather than loans as such. But that isn't something that I am aware of. But also, I forgot what the second point was in relation to the valuations, yeah. All the valuations are reviewed annually. They do a paper review over two years, for two years, but then there will be a full revaluation, I believe, once every three years. However, then between years one and two, they do a desk, what's known as a desktop uplift based on inflation, building cost, et cetera. And then in the third year, it's revalued again. Because you, obviously the council doesn't, it would cost to revalue every property, it costs quite a lot more to have them revalued every year. What they do is they just inflate them, and then in year three again, fully revalue again, inflate. And they do that on a rolling basis and assets types each year one, different asset type in year two, and then a different asset type in year three. So it's not all hitting year three.
The reason why I'm asking, because, you know, the building itself, it can be, it's a value added on our, you know, assets, which is, it makes our portfolio more richer than not having it in. That's all we are. That's why I'm asking.
We'll ask the question and then put it on the list of things to be looked into and come back to with an answer on, on the valuation of the property, okay? Claire, do you want to come back in?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted, yes, I'm, sorry, I just wanted to let you know that I've got those dates that you asked for, if you would like me to share them with you now.
If you don't mind, please.
Not at all. So the cyber report, the terms of reference were agreed in May two thousand and twenty five. The fieldwork took place in June, and the final report was issued in August twenty five.
So the, May and June was the two months, the main months when that was taken into consideration, all that work, yeah?
The fieldwork was done in June.
June, right. So the fieldwork was done in June, okay. What about the other one?
And then the one that resulted in the insufficient controls, the terms of reference were agreed in April. Fieldwork took place in May twenty five, and the report was issued in July twenty five.
Thank you. That's one we need to find out, which applies. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Okay. Right, we're going to councillor Woodliffe.
Thanks, Chairman. Sean, if I can come at you. I noticed in the list of financial investments that we've got four councils there that are based in Scotland. Now, Scottish law isn't slightly different from English law, isn't it? I know that when we were, well, many several years ago, we were looking at chasing people up because they hadn't paid their taxes or something like that. And I remember the officer saying to me that, well, they're in Scotland, which is a different place up there, we don't pursue those. I wonder whether or not, because I know it says UK, but Scottish law is different from English law. So is that taken into account when we lend money to North Lanarkshire and the rest of it up there?
Yes, there is slightly different rules. I believe Scottish local authorities don't issue section one one four notices. I think there's some other terminology, I'm not sure what it is. But effectively, they are still secure in relation to, they're backed by government as such. And then if any local authority, whether they be UK, Welsh or Scottish, gets into financial difficulty, they would have to be bailed out by the respective government, be that English, Scottish or Welsh. And they would still have to contractually meet, make contractual payments. So yes, the, whilst the process is different, the, effectively it's still the same outcome.
One of the things I noticed that the Police and Crime Commissioner for Hertfordshire is down. It's borrowing two million. I don't see the pricing piece of, I don't see the Police and Crime Commissioner for Lincolnshire included. Would that be considered a risky venture?
Well, we do see quite a lot of the Police and Crime Commissioner in throughout the country looking to borrow funds. But the, the Hertfordshire one is the only one that I believe that Boston Council has got. We have done others for other councils, and since, I think that loan has matured since this report was written, but it has been reissued. We've now reissued another loan to them on preferential terms, so good for the council's budget.
Thank you very much indeed for such a full report. Thank you, Chairman.
That's okay. Right, thank you very much, members. Sean, thank you very much for your report. And as usual, well done, very thorough, very detailed. You answered all the questions very clearly and concise. So the recommendation is that the members of the Audit Governors Committee receive and review the contents of the report attached to appendix one, which we have done. Can I have a proposal, please? Councillor Azard, second day councillor, Drayton. All in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? Right, motion carried. Thank you. Recommendation carried. Right, we're going to the work programme now. Item six, work programme on page seventy one. Are there any questions on this at all? councillor Austin. Is your microphone on?
Before we finish the meeting, I have to say that whilst our internal audit is, is good, I feel that the external sound system is inadequate. I hope that the new system that I believe is due at the end of this week will help to improve that situation. If we only have the same sound coming from the external presenters as we have internally, that would be, that's what we want to aim for, I believe.
Yes, I understand from the team here that we've got the microphones coming tomorrow, is it, or this week? All being well, fingers crossed. So hopefully we'll be able to have a better, clearer. No, 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 I understand, I understand, I understand. Any other questions at all? councillor Dorian.
I'd like to suggest that we add to the work programme a self assessment of this committee's effectiveness. I've been really disappointed in the lack of meaningful questions this evening and in the lack of participation of several councillors. So I think a self assessment and then from there perhaps pick up some, that will identify additional training needs that we need to cover on.
councillor Azard.
To thank councillor Dorian, but to be honest, you write down some questions and then other people answer the questions, and I'm not going to double up wasting time doing the same thing. So that may seem that some of, some of the councillors are not partaking. It's just that maybe one or two councillors have asked the questions before they get there.
Yes, councillor Austin.
I think the other point is that the report that we've had this evening is far better than anything we've had for many years, and it's far more effective, and it reduces the need for many questions that would otherwise be needed. And we don't want to ask questions for the sake of it, that's for sure.
Understood. I agree with entirely. councillor Woodliffe.
I think you're doing an excellent job, Chairman. And I think this committee is performing better than, I think, many other committees I've sat on in the last, I don't know, fourteen years. You're really on the ball, you ask the right questions, the officers know that, you know, you want the answers. I don't think that any extra training is required, and I don't think the criticism made by a departed councillor is relevant at all. I think we just carry on as we are, and that's, that's the way it is. But well done, Chairman.
I agree. Thank you very much, councillor Woodliffe, for that confidence. councillor Danny.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. It is, I think, funny in a way, but it's very, I would not say immoral, but something which is not right, that somebody after two years, leading a group, start complaining about councillors and calling them lazy. They're not doing the right thing, they're not asking, while they were in the previous two years supported for not probably talking. And I wish that councillor Dorian has sat next to me and continued to sit, because I think we have to be mature and respect other councillors. And we shouldn't allow that kind of language to be said in every meeting that people are lazy, they're not doing the job. We are not robots. We are all councillors, we have other commitments, and we have other jobs, and we have families, and we have things to do. If things are missed, it's not due to our laziness or to our lack of care. However, it can happen to anyone. Nobody is perfect. Therefore, I think, for courtesy, I think all councillors in Boston Borough Council and Officer deserve respect and not to be called lazy, not to be called that they don't know what they're doing, or they're like that or that. Some people are better than others, and some people more qualified than others. Maybe I'm not perfect in English, however, I manage six languages. So if somebody can beat me on that, but it's not the issue. As long as we have good communication and we have good understanding, and as I said, we respect each other. There's no need for people to repeat questions, and there's no need for people to be probably scared or terrified from someone to criticize, to criticize them. And I think, as I said, we work together for the benefit of Boston, and that's the end of the line. That's the bottom line. That's the things what we should go for. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Totally agree with what you're saying. Well done. councillor Cantwell.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think it's disappointing that councillor Dorian didn't care to remain for this discussion. If she had, we could have enlightened her that there is actually quite a robust self assessment process for each year that we undergo, where each member has to fill out a quite detailed survey on their abilities and what they think the committee is doing well and what it hasn't done well. It's sad. Maybe we could communicate that to her if she, she decided to leave the meeting early just to make sure she knows about the process of self assessment.
Well said. I can entirely agree with you. Unfortunately, councillor Dorian has only been into one meeting, and this is the first meeting she's been to in two years. So she doesn't really understand this committee and how it works and operates. And, and then I don't take kindly to some of the sarcastic comments that comes out of her mouth. And quite frankly, I think she needs to read the Noden Principles, you know, inside out to understand what they really do mean. Because I'm getting a little bit fed up of sitting in this position here with sarcastic comments thrown across the table. But anyway, I don't believe we need any performance review. I think we do that ongoing. And I think I will ask all you members to agree with me. If you do, will we just go on, carry on as we are? And there's plenty of training being given as, as we go on through the, the financial year. And we've got enough information in front of us. And as far as I'm concerned, this committee is doing a very good job. And you can't ask a thousand and one questions if you haven't got the questions to ask, simple as that. And the officers are very thorough in what they say, and the questions come up the back of it. councillor Danny.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just out of this conversation, I just would like, with your permission, will it be possible for Sean to present us with the assets which is under the Boston council or probably B TAC? Will it be possible? Yeah, that's the question. Do we have any or we don't? But the building is one of our assets where we're sitting. Yeah, yeah. No, that's one. I mean, in the area, because we may go to a town council.
I understand that B doesn't have any assets anyway, as far as I can understand. So it's the council that own all the assets. Yes, but it's the council that have the assets. Sean, you want to just?
Yeah, unfortunately I don't get involved in that. All I get involved in is the investing, the borrowing, et cetera. But if that was something that members would need, I would imagine that it's something that you'd need to go to the property service, the property services team who manage the council's assets.
Anyway, thank you very much, everybody, for the meeting. I'm sorry you have to put up with some, one councillor's been a bit disrespectful to most people in this room. But unfortunately, that's the nature of the beast. So thank you very much for the, for going to the, to tonight's meeting, and I think we're very happy with the work programme as it is. And have a safe journey home. Thank you.
Thank you.